Call the meeting to all of those willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody get mic'd up.
I'm fine. I'll just make it bigger.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the additions?
So moved.
Katie? And Randy? Okay. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the agenda with the additions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Four, public forum?
No.
Nothing? Okay. Move on to number five, there's nothing. Number six, the consent agenda. Before I go for a motion on the consent agenda, I'd like to thank Christ the King Lutheran Church for $100 donation to the Wellness Room. And Jasper W E L C A donation of $50 to the Wellness Room. And would like to recognize Cal Jan's Maintenance Director for his 19 years of service to the district upon his resignation. And the resignation of Cindy Miller, Library Professional, for her 33 years of service to the district. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Did you get them done?
Yep.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Just, they're retiring.
Yep.
The retirement of Cal and...
Cindy.
Cindy.
Yep. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Number seven, financials. 7.1, review elementary building budget year-to-date. Does anybody have any questions?
I'd just add, this month's bills were about $960,000 and were about $24.5 million to date on the project. I know things are wrapping up, but like I mentioned before, there's a lot of punch lists and the little things that need to be done. There's a major asphalt-ing going on, so there are some, a few big-ticket items that are going on there too. But so far, everything's been, still moving along well.
Okay, and so far Jackie, everything is set to be available as needed or no problem pulling the money out of the accounts or?
Nope, we're caught up now, so.
Okay. That's a non-action item. 7.11, review new elementary building bills.
I just did that.
No, you did the budget.
You did the budget.
Oh, wow. I said how much we spent this month.
Yep, yep. Are there any questions on the building bills? Any questions? That's a non-action item. Move on to 7.1.2, approve the treasurer's report for elementary building bond. Jackie?
See, I gotta get the wrong one, Jackie. I'm gonna start using paper, isn't it?
(laughing).
Cash balance is $5.2 million, yep, and everything ties out. And this is just a summary to make sure that what Quell's Anderson has and what PMA has and what I have on my books all ties out.
Okay. Have there any questions for Jackie? Any questions? Can I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the elementary building bond?
So moved.
Second.
Brad and Randy? Okay, all those in favor of approving treasurer's report for elementary building bond signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 7.2, review of budget year-to-date. How are we doing there Jackie?
We're doing fine. I didn't make any budget transfers, so you'll notice some of the lines are like over 100%. This is, I talked to Mr. Enerson about it and it really doesn't serve a purpose right now to do it other than to make me look better and I'm (laugh) concerned about that.
It'd all been right on if it wouldn't have been for a few changes and additions that we had with some things like hiring a distance learning teacher and, you know, those weren't part of the budget when we started last year, so. And a few other things.
That were pretty minor. So our budget year-to-date right now, we're at 93%, and last year at this time, we're at 94%. So we're right, we're supposed to be.
Okay. That's a non-action item. 7.3, approve the treasurer's report for June. Jackie?
Okay, cash balance is 8.1, if I could see it. Yeah, I'm getting paper here. 125%, maybe I can see that.
8.6.
8.6 million. (laughing). And I've got, not a whole lot to say about it.
Okay.
Like I do all the bank reconciliations and make sure, once again, that my cash balance ties out and the bank statements too, what's on the books.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Jackie? Any questions? Can I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report for June?
So moved.
Second.
Chrissy and Randy? All those in favor of approval of the treasurer's report for June signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 7.4, approve regular bills for July. Does anybody have any questions on the regular bills for July?
I had one. On the very last couple of pages. To the Rock Center.
It's like $12,000?
Yeah, what are we paying them for?
One for $12,000 and a payment for $5.
Yeah.
One is for support of the programs that run in the summer and the other one is for the after-school program.
It's through community ed, right?
Through community ed, yes. Yep. And that's the same amount that we've been paying them since I've been here.
Okay. I was just, I'm like, I wonder why we were paying them.
And we get that in the levy money. And basically, basically, we get that in the levy money and then we turn around and they bill us and we give it to them.
Okay.
It's kind of like the summer recreation program.
That's about part of what it was for, in the other words.
We just, through our community ed, help fund some of those activities.
We're the fiscal host and...
Right.
Yep. Are there any other questions?
I also, just, I was, and since we're asking questions, the country club. Is that in the same dollar amount as what we normally do for a year?
No. They have a new agreement this year.
So we did a new agreement?
Right.
Okay, 'cause that seems like way more than what we've done in the past.
They came up with an agreement with the number of golfers and different activities we have out there and kind of build out more. 'Cause before it was like $1,000 a year.
Yeah, I was thinking like $1,400 or something was in my head.
So, and then we've got a couple of cartsheds, so they put this together. That was the agreement that we had with them. And then we'll evaluate it every two years to look at again how many golfers there were and then kind of base the fee on that primarily, so. But yeah, it is different than what has been in the past.
Okay.
Were we able to fund that through the lease levy?
Yes, we were able to do lease levy for those. It's kind of like the bowling alley for FIED and a few other things that we do. We use when we have our activities or classes at different places, so.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the regular bills for July?
So moved.
Second.
Katie and Randy? Okay, all those in favor of approval of the regular bills for July signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 7.5, approve high school activity bills for July. Does anybody have any questions on them? Any questions on the activity bills? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the high school activity bills for July?
So moved.
Second.
Did you get that done? Okay. All those in favor of approval of the high school activity bills for July signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to number eight, the board forum and information. 8.1, board reports and updates. Does anybody from the board have anything to contribute?
I can give an update on the library board.
Perfect.
The last meeting, we elected officers, so Evan Schiller will be the chairman. Justin Shore will be the vice chairman. And Melanie is the secretary. We got to tour the Living Water exhibit that's in the library. It's really neat. I would encourage everyone to go check it out. It actually has a feeling, kind of like you're in the science museum. I mean, it's got that thing. And they have a lot of testimonials from people that are in the county. And I don't know how long it took them to get this information, but it's a really neat thing just to participate in. And then that, we just had some regular business and that was it.
Okay. Facility steering committee met and we did tour the facility, portions of it.
Yep.
Coming along great. The food area, the tables and benches and stuff are in, in the commons now. And they're, they're pretty nice.
Yeah, they are.
Yep. It sounded like equipment's going in the weight room before too long.
August 16th is kind of the date that you're looking at turning it over to us for some occupancy, so.
Yep.
We've of course been trying to push to get in a few days, weeks earlier, but...
So will the weight room be available for when's fall sports start? Or no?
I can't, I think we can move equipment in, I'm not exactly sure when it's ready for full-blown.
Okay.
But I think August 16th is starting to be a day, so if that's, if they give us the green light, it could be, or that could be used, used then.
And they were just wiring it and lights when we were in there last week.
Right, flooring's in now.
Flooring and...
Yep.
And equipment has to come.
So, yep.
Yeah. So we did the facility steering committee and then we did a negotiations committee meeting shortly thereafter that one. We have one again this Wednesday night, negotiations committee. We've agreed to a couple of small items and we'll see how this week goes. Other than that, that's about all I have.
Which staff is it, is it teachers or?
Teachers.
That's what I thought.
And we do have a few other staff, but we haven't started with them yet.
District office staff.
Yep.
Have they decided what they're gonna, are they gonna raise the road in the corner?
That's what we talked about.
Right, I didn't know where they were at. Because down here by the stop sign here, where it's all always tore up. Jeff and I thought, well, maybe we should tile it to get the water to quit running out of that hill. I come in last Thursday, I think, and met with Donick. They had a better idea to raise that road up. Clean the culvert out. And then soften the culvert so the water can get away. You know, quit, should quit doing what we're doing, because they're gonna tear it out anyway.
Right. Well, and it needs to be fixed. Or it's gonna be a problem, yeah.
Yep.
I mean, otherwise we'll be back in there in a couple of years.
Yeah.
Right. And then September 15th is going to be a grand opening. The dedication.
It's Wednesday during the school day is what we're looking at, so.
Okay.
I did have, I guess, I don't know where I should put, um, I had a couple of community members concerned about the extra traffic out here. And I know we've had discussed about a crossing guard from, you know, or I should say this way to Paulson Fields after school and before school for those bikers and for those people going to practice after school. I don't know if that's something, but I know I had two people concerned about that.
We've had some preliminary conversations about bus pickups and traffic flow, so. Ideally, we shouldn't have kids crossing 30 at Brown anymore. Because we've got a, we're looking at having a pickup at the Harmon Park Shelter and then also on the, kind of the southwest corner of Brown. And, but, you know, the first day of school, we're gonna wanna make sure nobody is there, so we'll probably, but then eventually we'll be able to relocate that crossing guard back up here.
Well, I know my son will be crossing there, bikes. There's a lot of kids that bike.
Yeah, I've mentioned that before when I walk in the morning.
Lot of kids that bike.
It's unbelievable, the amount of kids that use this path.
Yeah.
Either on foot or on bike.
And I know a lot of them come from Brown, I know they do. I can think of four kids right now that bike.
Yeah.
It's a busy highway and it's a dangerous highway.
This neighborhood over here by, by Westview, Debs', a lot of those kids either walk or ride bike together too and, you know, that Second Street Northwest is gonna be different than it's ever been.
Yep. I just wanna make sure that we're not starting off the school year with, you know, I mean, and we have that problem right away, we're, I would say we're better off to be over staffed with it at first and then see where we can kind of...
Cut back.
Cut back, then be understaffed and then put kids at risk. That's my thoughts.
Safety first.
Even if the buses come in there, Katie, they're still riding bike or they just want to?
They just want to.
Okay. How about like in the winter?
Then they ride the bus.
Okay.
There's still some that ride bike.
I think there's still some that ride bike, but I, he rides the bus.
I take my walk when they're coming to school and it's unbelievable, the amount of kids.
That's good, I mean...
But we wanna encourage people to bike too, you know, I think that's...
Well, that's a healthy alternative.
Yeah, it is.
Which they did...
And it's less people on your bus too, that you're...
Which they did redo that path.
Yep.
And that's really nice. They repaved it all the way, the one out through Paulson.
Who's they?
Fuller, I would guess.
It's them.
Us.
Yeah, we did that.
That turned out really, that turned out really nice.
Toot our horn a little bit.
Yeah. Which it needed to be, it needed to be redone.
Well, and I don't know even at this one, maybe you could have older kids do it. I mean, it doesn't, I don't know what the requirements are of a crossing guard. I mean, can you have like a school patrol where it's maybe students, I don't know, that are older? I mean, it's just this, it's a matter of the parking lot, more or less.
Yep.
I don't know, that's just a thought too.
We haven't communicated our, all of this yet.
Right.
So I mean, we're getting ready for getting back to school and this type of things. And then, again, open houses before school starts and getting people to familiar with where everything's gonna be and how we're gonna move out here. So that'll, you know, that's all coming, so I understand. But those are legitimate concerns we need to address, so.
Okay. Are there any, anything else from the board?
Um, yeah, I had a church call me and ask what the criteria was gonna be for like the early out on Wednesdays. Like, can they have practice right after school at 1:30? Or are they gonna be able to like have like a religion class from like 1:30 to 3:45, say? And then they go, then they go back to practice? Or is there gonna be practice times scheduled in that?
Typically, we'd encourage there to be the church thing going on.
Right, that, that's what they wanna do, but they don't wanna be like, okay, now we're gonna have it. Well, oh crap, now you have tennis practice and you have basketball practice and you have this. I mean, they want it clear-cut, there's gonna be absolutely no practices until 3:45.
I know our church had asked about that too, of what the...
Because that'd be, I mean, I think that'd make the most sense rather than kids driving home and then coming back for practice and then driving back home and then coming, driving back in for church and then driving back home.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I'm saying?
Right.
I think it would just be a whole lot easier, just go right to church and then you go right to practice and then you're done.
The coaches who don't teach don't have duties that...
Right. I mean, but can you... Can you put that somewhere where they can't have a practice?
I think that was where we can, I mean, if there are things that are going on, we can most certainly, I think we'd like to accommodate that.
And I'm sure like 4-H can have lots of programming in that time too.
I'd say if it's a clear-cut thing, then people know that they can use it for that type of stuff. If not, then...
Just say no, under no circumstances, no practices until 3:45.
Yep.
Because that's when the teachers are contracted for anyway, correct?
Right. Yeah.
Has there been any discussions about like more after-school programming with the early outs or anything like that? At all? And then we have access to those American Rescue Plan dollars for after-school programs right now. Could, could we talk more about maybe growing something with those funds?
I know we talked about needs and if there were needs for different types of helping out with children not having somewhere to go and maybe putting together some type of thing. So I know that's been a conversation that we could utilize some of our paraprofessionals for some of those things if they're not having training and where that's at. Because we do have everybody contracted for that time, so.
Okay.
What I know as far as, at least I think the church, it's mainly middle school, correct? That's what we're...
Well, middle school, and I think like, well, from my end, I think that St. Leo's is thinking about high school students as well.
I would say, because I know our...
We're already here.
Because I know our students are concerned about middle school.
That would be the time to do it, if you're gonna do part of them, do it all.
Yeah, do it all, yep.
The hard part about that is those middle schoolers then have to go home at noon and come back either way.
Although they would go to religion too, well...
I know, but that's a long religion time, you're talking one to whatever and then till 3:45. I mean, I'm just...
1:30, that's two hours, that's what, well, St. Leo's does, one, one and a half hours already anyway.
Right.
And you could probably do like a little bit more hands-on and like huge group activities.
Yep. I'm just, that's just my thought, I just know we talked about it too and...
Yeah. We've talked about it too and...
Those kids going, you know, they're just at that age, a lot of them are that sixth, seventh and eighth grade that are not driving, you know, I mean, it's... No, it's things to think about.
Okay. Are there any other board comments? Okay, that's...
I would just encourage those churches to contact our building principals and let them know, you know, what they're thinking so that we, you know, can have that, know what's going on and where things are at, so.
Well, I would think that ministerial group itself would try and work together to...
Yeah, I think so.
They do, yeah, I think they meet once a month or once or two, one or the other.
Do we know who's like in charge of that or?
It used to be, uh...
They kind of take turns with...
I think they do take turns hosting it, yeah. I thought that one guy from, the one down by Hill School was in charge, was the head guy right now, but that could change too.
I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I can ask too, but I don't.
Okay, and we'll move on to number nine, administrators' report. 9.1, superintendent's board report.
I guess just to, the legislature did conclude its sessions and they did give school districts 2.5% and 2% on the formula each of the, or over the next two-year biennium. So that, that's been a little bit higher than what we've usually got, so that was, that was good to see. There's also some special education funding that's associated with that. Then they have a lot of specialty projects that we're in and I don't know how much of that will impact us. Policy-wise, not a whole lot of things there. They did kind of hold off on new standard implementation, kind of across the board for a few years. I think with everything that's going on, they just wanted to slow that whole process down. So they've extended that out of two to four years, depending upon the different content areas, so. But overall, that, you know, has come out, we've come out well with that. So that'll be a good thing for our budget and that'll help out a little bit there. And then I guess the only other thing I'd look at is just, you know, we've got positions available at the district, paraprofessionals, support staff, custodian, we've got some teacher needs and those types of things, so. We're just putting out some things on, using a few other sources to try to make sure that people know that we have those positions available. And if they're looking for some work here this fall, please let us know. So that's kind of where that's at, so.
Okay.
And then I would just say that we're starting to gear up for school. Admin team met last week and then we start meeting again next week and getting things really, the ball rolling for the start of school. As of right now, you know, we're planning to start school as, as a normal year. The only things that we're waiting for clarification on right now, masks on bus would be required. We'll see how that is, how that goes, we've got a little while left to go there. And then see what, you know, if the health, if they come up with other guidelines. But right now, they've had nothing for us, so our plan is to kind of move forward, do the best we can. We'll have more details. I'll just let you know, we're probably gonna have to have a special board meeting the 9th of August to, just for things to, before school, just some, I'm just anticipating, we're gonna have to have a special meeting in a couple of weeks just to take care of a few things, so. Employee contracts and also procedural items, so. Keep next, two weeks, or August 9th on your calendar open.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Kevin? Any questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to 9.2, Director of Curriculum Teaching and Learning, Melanie.
Thank you, good evening. How we wrapped up our July math camp, otherwise known as July Summer School. But we had 12 students, 10 from Edrton. We had a total of 71 students, attend a majority of the days. They had a blast and our staff did an amazing job. Mrs. Finnicle and Mr. Wielenberg worked with all of the teachers to make sure there were some extra special math activities. We now have a plethora of sidewalk chalk and a lot of fun things to do with sidewalk chalk for math. So we were excited and the kids loved it. Just, you know, every time I would walk into a room, they were doing something new and different and it was all about math. So it was, it was good for our students. Other than that, I've been working through our district data downloads with our MCA results. I can't speak to them at this moment in time because they are embargoed results. But know that I'm looking through them and we'll be reporting to Mr. Enerson later this week on the findings of that information, so. We can't speak about them until they are embargoed, which would be the end of August.
Okay. Anything else?
That is it at this moment.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Melanie? Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
We'll move on to number 10, discussion items. Does anybody have any discussion they wanna take place? Any discussion? None, we'll move on to our next board action. 11.1 to 11.5 are the handbooks and we're going to approve them in one motion. So we got 11.1 is the 21-22 Handbook for Little Earls Preschool. 11.2 is the 21-22 Handbook for Pipestone Elementary. 11.3 is the 21-22 Middle School Handbook. 11.4 is the 21-22 High School Handbook. And 11.5 is the 21-22 Activities Handbook. Are there any questions on them?
I had a one question, well, I have two questions, because I just noticed this. We should probably take that, the one Rachel off there as a preschool teacher, we should probably remove that before we print them, if it hasn't been printed. And then, so I was looking through this, so they don't have to be potty-trained to come to preschool? Because I seen that on here somewhere. I gotta look for it, yes. Your child does not need to be toilet-trained to attend preschool?
I seen that.
Is that true?
I would imagine, a lot of two-year-olds aren't, two and three-year-olds aren't...
So no staff is changing diapers and stuff? That is my question. Not that I've seen. I just never knew that that was, I assumed all kids had to be potty-trained, so I guess, I thought they start at three.
We do have some, we do, I mean, there's also some early childhood special education that starts even before age of three.
I was thinking they're... Come in for a quick 20 minutes. Right, then that was, so maybe that has to do with them? It may. Okay, I just...
We provide personal cares to high school students.
Right, and I get, understand that. But that, to me, is different too.
Okay.
Okay, just ask.
I can find out for you though, more specifically.
And maybe it just pertains to like some of the, I mean, maybe that's what the deal is, I'm not sure. I just was wondering.
And typically, I would assume their parent would be with them.
When they're that little, yeah, a lot of them are parent-type.
I know, I just.
With early childhood family education, sometimes that's part of it and, you know, where they're, where they're at with things. But I, I have to be honest, I'm not well-versed in that, so I will, I will find out and.
Reading through that, I was just wondering, I thought, I was surprised by that, but maybe it just has to do with the younger kids too. I didn't think about that, I guess.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
I did see one thing, just because I have a disorder. But, um, so in the student handbook for the high school, under academic instruction, it says the minimum is 59, but then under the commencement and number six, it says 44 credit requirements. That should probably be changed to 59. Okay.
Good catch.
It's just mine. That is page four.
Because those numbers just changed too.
They just changed, yeah.
May I have missed one? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other discussion on them? Any other discussion? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the handbooks?
Second.
We got Lance and Katie or Brad.
No, it's Kirsty.
I don't know.
Chrisy.
Chrisy, yeah.
Okay.
It was close.
Brad could have it if he wanted.
I'm good.
Okay, all those in favor of approval of the handbooks signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes.
So with those two changes though, correct?
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
Move on to eleven point six, approval of employee handbook. Is there any discussion?
This is new and this is part of our strategic plan when we did the surveying of staff and with the strategic plan that we did a year ago, January, talking about, you know, employees and expectations and communications and those types of things. One of the things that we're looking at doing is, is putting this employee handbook together to kind of work on having district-wide expectations, things being written clearly in there. You've had a chance to look, you can see it talks about, just about everything that has to do with being an employee. Building principals still will have expectations of staffs there, but this is in general, you know, what are the expectations that we have as a district for you? We did have the employee groups sit down, ask questions, ask for clarifications, so we did do that last week. Chrissy was actually there, we, and so we've made sure that if anything wasn't clear, we've made it clear. If there were other items, we've updated them, so this is our first run at it. Our idea is, is that we put this in place, we see how things go, if there are things that are missed, if there are things that aren't there or should be taken out, we can have those discussions, but we feel like this is a good step in having those common expectations that people seem to have concerns about and we're trying to address them, so this is our, there's been employee handbooks here, I found out, but I don't know where they've gone, but this is one for 2000, 2021, 22 school year, so that, basically the board is putting in place for us, so.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the employee handbook?
Second.
Chrissy and Randy. All those in favor of approval of employee handbook signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eleven point seven, approve the Heartland Colony lease for 21-22. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Again, this is one I brought up to Kevin earlier, they will need to update the, the Helen Brown names are in the lease.
That's in case any students need to come in for edu, I mean, those students are eligible to come in for education programming or services if needed there, so. Okay.
Okay.
And this is a, you know, the colony, we provide education programming, their space, we end up leasing it for $1, kind of a formality, so that we have that agreement to educate their children and they provide that, right now it's in the basement of their church, I believe, or community hall, church, right? It's their church, yeah, so.
It's on ground level though, isn't it?
You walk down the steps.
Really?
Down.
So I was thinking that was, because I thought the lease says it's on, supposed to be on ground level.
Well, you, well, can you walk in?
I walk down four steps to the classroom, unless there's another entrance, I don't know.
It's entirely possible.
That isn't.
I don't go out there.
The one I've been directed to go in is four steps down.
Okay.
So it's the bottom floor.
Okay.
Okay.
But we do this annually with the colony, so.
Yep. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the Heartland Colony lease for 21-22?
Second.
Did you get that Deb?
I'm still not sure.
Brad and Randy. Okay, all those in favor of approval of the Heartland Colony lease for 21-22 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eleven point eight, resolution approving school district 2689 long-term facility maintenance 10-year plan.
Each year we have to provide the state with our 10-year plan. We update it as need. We can levy for these dollars and so this is the updated plan. I will add that the amount of money we will be able to get for maintenance is gonna drop significantly because it's based upon square footage, which we're getting more of, but it's also based heavily on age of your building, so because of the new elementary and the old elementary's dropping off, there'll be a, we will get about 50%, 55% of our LTFM allocation. Now, when this building hits 25 years old, it kind of, another formula kicks in and so it'll, it'll start to bounce back up again, but we also shouldn't have as much maintenance.
Oh, so we shouldn't have as much.
Yep, and we've done a lot of work and so we'll be kind of just making sure that we take care of everything with this.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Can I have a motion to approve the school district 2689 long-term facility maintenance 10-year plan?
Second.
Katie and Randy. Got that Deb?
Quick, I'm drawing.
All those in favor of approval of the resolution of the 2689's long-term facility maintenance 10-year plan signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. Hearing none, it was unanimous.
Got it, thanks.
Yep. Eleven point nine, resolution regarding fund balance transfers. Fund balance transfer from basic skills extended time to general fund unassigned fund balance. Are there any questions?
I'm confused.
Okay.
I'm confused!
This is Jackie's.
Okay, for two years, the state told us we had to reserve 2% of our basic skills money and put in extended basic skills for summer.
Okay.
Now we don't have to reserve anymore. We can't even use the accounts that we used to reserve it in. So I asked when I was at U First, why, were they, all of a sudden for two years we had to do it, now we don't have to do it? And they told me, politics. So they said, move the fund balance now and move to the unassigned fund balance because the less money that you have, I'm never politically correct, the less money that you have in the reserve, the better off you are, because then you have freedom to do, to spend that money and how you want to.
Perfect.
So that's what that's about. So that 32,000 is what the fund balance was in extended basic skills at 630, 2020.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Okay.
Claire's mine.
I left my personal in there. I'm talking myself.
No, I, I do, that's good.
Yeah, okay.
I understand.
It's Jackie's world.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the resolution regarding fund balance transfers?
Second.
Lance. Second. And Randy. Okay, all those in favor of approving the resolution regarding fund balance transfers, the fund balance transfer from basic skills extended time to general fund unassigned fund balance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes, and Amy is the absent one on that one.
Got it.
Okay. Eleven ten, approve demolition bid for Brown and Hill Elementary. Want to address that Kevin?
We received five bids for the demolition of Brown and Hill. Kraus Anderson has done all of the base work to, for what this needs to be done. They verified the scope and all of these companies' bids are based upon what we want it done and they, they say, they won't give us a recommendation, but they said here it is and everybody's gonna meet the expectations of what you want for the demolition of those buildings, so.
Okay.
My concern is still the stuff inside the buildings. I know a lot of people would like to have a chance to either buy or get some of them, of the things that were, that are in the buildings, and I understand that they take over that, but what is the process for that? Because the last thing I want is us to approve one of these people and then someone to drive by and all that stuff is in the garbage out there. It's gonna be a problem. I'm just saying, it's a problem for me.
Does somebody want to buy it?
Yeah.
Well, then they have to get all the DRC and say, we want to buy this.
But are they gonna, how does that process work? Is that, are we just, do we know that for sure, that they're gonna say, yes, if you want to come in and buy it, you can, or?
We're giving it over to this company, that's part of the bid.
I know, I don't know if I feel comfortable doing that. That's what I'm saying.
Okay. We can, okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is there a way that we can like sell it first or like have people go through it? I mean, I know it's a lot of, a lot of extra work or whatever, but I mean, I think it would, I think it would go far in the community if they could come in and, I want to buy that table, okay, buy the table. You know, I don't know. I don't know. I, I think that's a, a good idea too, just to.
Well, and the taxpayers own it. It's a taxpayer's thing. I mean, the taxpayers bought everything that's in those schools and I get that word, you know, but I just feel like, that, that is my biggest concern about it and I don't feel comfortable giving it all over to them, where, when I don't know or understand the process at which people can contact them and get those things if they would like them.
Okay.
I agree.
So what is the timeline for them to, to do the demolition?
I know it was gonna be this fall, so.
Okay. So is the Pee Wee baseball field included in that demolition?
No.
Is that parking lot included in that demolition?
I know the road is, the circular road at each one of them, parking lot at Brown?
Yeah.
I can't remember.
And that's playground at both places?
Would be included in the bid.
Right.
So do they take down all the trees that are there? They level everything or no? Not?
There are some trees that are, that have to go for them to get at the building because there's a bunch of trees right along the building, but not all the trees on the lot. Only the ones that interfere with them taking the building down.
Okay.
It says right in the bid that what they're taking, which, how many trees and?
Yeah, the one said seven trees.
Oh, is this, I guess I didn't see.
That one says the parking lot.
One of them, it doesn't say that Kevin.
The one lists parking, the asphalt's and concrete.
Say, scene one was.
And parking lot.
One had trees, I know that.
Okay.
Some are like really detailed and some are not.
I didn't notice that. Some are, yeah, some are not detailed.
Right, right. So if, if we didn't approve tonight and ask for further clarification, is that gonna put us in a pickle with anything?
I don't know.
Some of these bids have a timeline.
This is what we, this is what we've been working on and if you want something different, you gotta.
Well, I've expressed these concerns before.
Yep.
I mean, it's not something new that hasn't been brought up before. I mean, I feel like, we keep saying that they can contact these people, but I still don't know how they can contact these people. I'm not trying to.
I know.
Throw a problem into it, but I just.
And we've talked about it's, it's complicated. There's asbestos, there's a lot of things that go into this and, you know, and yeah, I know everybody wants to buy a table for, for two bucks, but when it costs us $5 in labor to get it all set up, I mean, then we start having to put a price tag on it and then they say, well, we don't want to pay that.
Right.
Well, this is what it costs us to set all this stuff up for you there, you know, and I, they want us to give it away. I mean, if you want to give it all away, we can set it all out on the curb, but you know, we've already kind of put all this as part of, this is everything in there, because we had, we had projectors and things and it was like, are these going? And I go, nope, and so our tech people had to scramble and go get all that stuff out of those buildings, because that wasn't going part of it. But we've taken what we've needed, we've sold to other schools what we've, you know, things that other schools could use for educating children and the rest we've said, we'll let these companies deal with it. That was the recommendation of the Facility Steering Committee and that's where it's at. If they go back on their word, I, I don't know what to tell you, but that was what we asked for with this and that was who we wanted to take care of this, because what you're saying is gonna cost us time, money.
Yep.
Effort, energy to get all of this stuff out so the public can pick through it and whatever they don't want, then we're throwing it in the garbage. At least these guys are salvaging it and, you know, or, well, I suppose we could, again, cost us money to put the steel in one pile and tin in another and whatever those things.
We told them to bid this way.
Right.
Well, and if you look at some of the bids, it, it specifically lists contents, you know, certain things.
That looks one out, got wood he wanted, I mean, he wanted some wood for, for projects that he could be utilizing, so I mean, we, we've taken what we want out of there from educational things and, you know, I know people are worried, but we're not leaving reams of paper and things that we can use are, are not being left there. It's the stuff that we don't use, so.
Okay.
I'll do whatever you guys want me to do.
So here's one on dualists. Remove and dispose of asphalt, concrete, playground surfaces, and equipment. It's right in their bid.
I mean, I noticed that too. There's a lot of difference, discrepancy between all these.
Tree removal, seven trees will be removed, north side of Brown Elementary. So there's some.
Well, I wondered about that lowest bid, it really doesn't tell you what's all in.
Right. Does that cap the shore? It doesn't say it. The other ones do.
Right.
But it has to meet the bid specs that we had and then Kraus Anderson verifies that, so.
Which, which.
Disconnect utility.
So everything's been checked off that way?
Yeah, Kraus Anderson did all like the background work and verified that it met the specs that we had posted.
So it doesn't matter what's on their sheet?
Yeah, I mean, they give it in much detail as they do, you know, and if we want clarification, Kraus Anderson could probably get that, but.
Okay. Well, as long as it's.
And, and I, I questioned it because it's, the variance in the sizes of the bids.
Right.
Because of what, one of the bids we had issues with in this, in the new facility. And, yeah, they, they are, have assured, they've checked it and, and again, it'd be bonded, so they can't come back and say, well, we're halfway done, we're not gonna finish it.
Right.
And this low bid is also the one that did central.
Yep.
So.
Where does this low bid fall to what we have in the budget for the decommissioning?
I think the budget was like 630,000 or 680, one of the two.
Okay. I knew we're doing it regardless, but I was just curious.
Yeah. The one thing is, no matter who does it, is we don't want to see the ball field, the equipment that's there. The one thing is, no matter who does it, is we don't want to see the ball field, the equipment that's there-
Right.
Destroyed.
That was not part of any demo.
Right.
Property's still ours, we're just, these buildings are what-
Yes.
And, I mean, if we would've said, you can't touch any trees, then they would've had to work around them, but we said, if you need to remove some of these trees to get at, we don't want you to-
Do we know any timeline with any of them, I mean, like when they would start, or?
I was told this fall, you know what I mean, it sounds like they could get going, so, you know.
Yeah, the one thing-
September, October.
One thing I seen is they're, they all pretty well said they'd probably have to seed come spring, which is true. Give it time to settle, get it re-leveled, and give it time to grow come spring.
Well, I think the, the company that did, did the old Central High School, I mean, that property looks nice, the grass is, you know, they leveled it, they seeded it, it didn't settle, so they packed it well, it, it, it looks like they did what they were supposed to do, so.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Then can I have a motion to approve the demolition bid for Brown and Hill? And name which company you would, are making the motion for?
I'd like a motion to approve DRC Incorporated.
Okay.
The low bid.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the demolition bid from DRC for the demolition of Brown and Hill Elementary Schools, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Katie and Christie? Okay, motion passes for two. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some will.
Katie, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, hearing none, motion passes, meeting adjourned.